Well, Happy Valentine's Day, everyone. I'm gonna call this Lacey City Council meeting to order. Can everyone please stand for that Pledge Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we have a printed agenda and consent agenda item. Is there any additions? Can I get a motion?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We have an agenda. And first up on our agenda is the Lacey Loves to Read bookmark winner recognition. Jeanette.
I couldn't think of a more fitting day to be doing this, right? Lacey Loves to Read, Valentine's Day. I'm Jeanette with Lacey Parks and Recreation. And I'm Holly with the Lacey Timberland Library.
And I'm Karen Johnson with North Thurston Public Schools.
And we're here to talk about Lacey Loves to Read and a portion of Lacey Loves to Read, which is really special to us. Lacey Loves to Read is now celebrating its 16th year, and it continues to be a popular and successful community literacy partnership between the city of Lacey, the Lacey Timberland Library, the Lacey South Sound Chamber, and North Thurston Public Schools. The mission of Lacey Loves to Read is to bring the community together around the works of one award-winning author. Each year, we look for someone who has written a variety of books which will spark more interest and encourage reading for all ages. And we couldn't do this program without the support of the many community sponsors and businesses, including the Friends of the Lacey Library, WSCCU, Silven, Scholastic Books, North Thurston Education Foundation, and many more.
This year's program will feature New York Times bestselling author illustrator of the Amulet graphic novel series Kazu Kibushi. His most recent book in the series, Amulet VIII Supernova, was released this past fall to fans' delight. His debut graphic novel, Daisy Cutter: The Last Train, won a YALSA Best Books for Young Adults Award. He is also the creator of the webcomic Copper, and in 2012, he illustrated the covers for the Harry Potter 15th Anniversary Edition paperbacks. Kazu is fourth-generation Japanese-American. He currently lives in Seattle with his wife, author Amy Kim Kibushi, and their children, where he works as a full-time graphic novelist. Lacey Loves to Read and the Lacey Timberland Library is also proud to sponsor our Teen Graphic Novel Contest, with a goal of giving more kids a chance to participate by sharing their writing and art skills. This year, we had 20 teens submit their work. The winners will have their work preserved in an ebook and be recognized at a special reception with the author during his visit. Each year, we tailor events that reflect the specialties or themes of our authors. This year, we plan to make your own comics workshop at the Lacey Library with comics author Kathy Camper for ages 9 to 18. It was originally scheduled for this past weekend. However, due to snow, it has been rescheduled to March 23rd at 2:00 p.m. We are also having an Artist's Alley prior to the main event this Thursday, February 21st, next Thursday, I guess it is, from 6:15 to 7:00 p.m. at River Ridge High School, where students of all ages will be showcasing their art.
And this is the sixth year of the Read Around Lacey Partnership, where elementary students visit participating businesses and read aloud something they have written or something that they're reading. In return, the business employees tell the kids how they use reading in their jobs and in their businesses. With the leadership of the Lacey South Sound Chamber, 20 businesses opened their doors February 1st, and we've extended it through February 20th due to the weather. And elementary students will have a chance to win a Kindle Fire or a family fun package, and everyone who goes to at least six businesses will get a cool prize and some fun Read Around Lacey swag.
And of course, the highlight of Lacey Loves to Read is when our author visits. And I have to tell you, our event is such high-class and high-caliber, we attract some really famous authors. So this year, we have Kazu Kibushi will be in Lacey February 20th and 21st to meet and greet our Lacyites at school assemblies and our famous community author reception, which will be held at River Ridge High School this year, in the auditorium, 7 o'clock p.m. on February 21st. This community event includes an author presentation, book sales and signings, and free books from the South Sound Reading Foundation Book Fan.
And that brings us to why we are here tonight. Part of the Lacey Loves to Read tradition is to get kids excited about the program. So each fall, we combine literacy with the arts and the bookmark contest for Lacey Loves to Read. This year, once again, we had hundreds of students from throughout the community and the school district enter the Lacey Loves to Read bookmark contest, sponsored in part by South Press and the North Thurston Education Association, which is our teachers. We had 24 winners representing every school in the district, as well as private schools and homeschoolers. Tonight, we are here to introduce our six grand prize bookmark winners, the top in each age group from North Thurston Public Schools in the community. Once again, the competition was tough, and the artwork was simply amazing. But before we take, I want to take a moment to recognize, there we go, the great committee that puts Lacey Loves to Read together. So if you're with the Lacey Committee, Lacey Loves to Read Committee, or if you are a teacher or librarian, if you'd love to stand, have you stand? And we don't have too many here, nobody's been in school, it's been snowy, but thanks, Sharla, this committee, let's give her a hand. She's one of our librarians. And this committee and the teacher-librarians are what make this program go. So, for kids that are going to be recognized, when you hear your name called, please come up, you'll accept your certificate from the mayor. We'd like you to shake hands with all the council members, and then we're gonna have you wait up here, and we're gonna do a quick group picture. So unless any of you want to say anything, if you want to say anything, just let us know, we'll give you the mic. All right, here we go.
So for our first category, kindergarten first grade, grand prize winner, Harper Roberts, first grade at Meadows Elementary School.
We'll hold on to it. Yeah, we'll give it to her at the end.
Great job, Martha.
I'm glad she said yes.
For the second and third grade grand prize winner, we have Logan Beeks, third grade, Lakes Elementary School. Okay, Logan's not here today. For the fourth and fifth grade grand prize winner, we have Michelle Pringle, fifth grade at Seven Oaks Elementary School. For our middle school grand prize winner, Lily Zaruba, sixth grade, Salish Middle School. Our high school grand prize winner, Dallin Glade, 11th grade, North Thurston High School. And our community grand prize winner, Kylie Mackey, 9th grade, Northwest Christian High School.
Well, congratulations to all the winners, and thank you, parents, for coming out here and braving the weather. And I know it's been a difficult week where we've, everyone's been out of school all week long, so I'm sure we're all looking forward to the kids being able to get back to school. I know I am. But, uh, what? But, uh, yeah. But, you know, thank you for being here, and congratulations once again. Feel free to...
Yeah, great job, everyone.
So, next up on our agenda is public comments on items not on the agenda, and we currently do have one person who signed up, Jerry Fox. Could she please come up and say your full name, and tell us where you're from, and keep your comments, about three minutes.
Is the timer on?
I'll start timing right now.
All right. My name's Jerry Fox. I've been a Lacey resident since 1974. Had a business here for 10 years, raised three children, and now have 10 grandchildren. Tonight, I'm here as a member of the Greenbrier Homeowners Association, which borders 45th Avenue across from the Reiner Vista Park. I'm here with my support group, my wife, Cher Fox, the association president, Wendy Lippman, my neighbor Debbie Scogan, and my neighbor Mike Conneboy. I'm here to address the council in need. We have two trees on our association property that have caused significant damage and concern. I being probably the one most affected. We applied for a permit to have the two trees taken down, and the permit was denied, and it was denied for two reasons. One was a low risk to the tree in question, trees in question, and moderate risk for the limb damage that it would cause. We then came back to the city and applied for a land-clearing permit, which was our next venue that was given to us. And that permit was also denied for the same two reasons. The trees in question are at low risk for failure and moderate risk for limb failure. It was helpful to read in the Foresters Report that there is a paragraph which states, "The owner of the trees has a decision to determine risk the association is willing to tolerate." The challenges for us and the association have been roof damage, mine was punctured, rain gutter damage and had to be replaced and crossed the entire back of my home, as did Debbie Scogan, fence damage to the common area fence, as well as to the neighboring shared fences on both sides of my property with Mike and with Debbie. I have 10 grandchildren that frequent my yard, and I enjoy that. And my concern is frequently, will they be hurt? Can they be damaged in a way that would be irreparable? I personally gone out on 45th Avenue because my property borders 45th Avenue, and have removed multiple limbs from 45th Avenue, which have blocked the roadway from Ruddle to College and back and forth, that were subsequently too large for a car to go over. The association has passed a special assessment, which was granted by all 100% of our association members. We have funds available. We have secured four tree removal companies to come and look at the trees in question, and have picked one which, in our opinion, as an association, would benefit the removal of the tree in a safe way for the city and with the traffic on 45th Avenue.
So Jerry, as you're approaching the end of your time, was your tree damaged with this latest storm, with this snow?
With minor limb damage only, thankfully. Our concern, I think, was ice storm, which has been a factor as well. So, we're asking the city council to grant us an opportunity to remove the two trees on our association property, and then we would like to replant in accordance with the city's recommendations and direction. And I want to thank you for the time that you give each of us as Lacey City residents.
So, thank you for your time. This is something that we will need to talk over with the city and think about next steps, and we'll have someone from the city be able to get back to you with what the possible next steps could be.
Appreciate it, and we have a large binder that we can pass along any information that you might need.
Thank you.
Thanks for the time.
Yeah, appreciate it. Please, you can come up and, you have three minutes.
I am Wendy Lippman, and I am president of the Greenbrier HOA, and I have been working on this since November of 2015. And one item I wanted to also give you to consider was that 15 years ago, it was recommended that these trees be, and there's different terms for this, sailed, thinned, but the idea was every other limb was taken out, which would allow wind to come through, because most of the damage occurs in wind events. Not most, I think all of it is due to the wind events. And so, what forestry has now found out, that this is not no longer a recommended method because Douglas fir's limb stability depends upon each limb that's under it and above it, and by removing every other one, we actually made limb failure more likely. Also, when the park was, Reiner Vista Park was cleared, many trees were taken down, which were then, were also buffering our trees. So now, all of, now we just get that full blast, and as you're probably all aware, our prevailing winds do come from the southwest, which is just toonk right at us. And the third thing was Douglas firs are meant to grow in groves, in large stands, because the limbs from neighboring trees, along with their own limbs, all support limbs. We have trees that have been mismanaged over, they're, since that part of the city has been developed, which is why we're having so many issues with limb loss. And I think that's an important thing to consider, is that, you know, they're not, they don't have the support of neighboring trees, and under forestry recommendations, they were limbed, now that is no longer a, an appropriate remedy. And Ron's Tree Service, who we have contracted to do this work, came out, and because of the limb loss that we've had, we have this really dense growth in the middle, and that shouldn't be. If you went out into a Douglas forest, you'd look up, you would be able to stand at the base of a trunk and look straight up, because the limbs are supposed to lose their inner needles and be on the outer ones. But every time, when branches fall off, it'll stimulate growth. So you look under ours, and we see all of this other growth up there that is not right. Plus, there's dead limbs up there, we were told. So for a number of reasons, yes, healthy trees, very much moderate risk of limb damage, and we have ongoing expenses that we submitted at one time to show that. Thank you for that extra.
Thank you, no problem. Is there anyone else wishing to address this council on any items not that, not on the agenda? Seeing none? Then our next item on our agenda is a proclamation for Lacey Loves to Read Month. And as always, we'll get started with Councilmember Cox.
City of Lacey official proclamation. Whereas literacy is a top school and community concern and is integral to success in school, business, and daily living, and?
Thank you. Whereas providing opportunities for citizens of all ages to discuss the cultural and literary merits of common reading will help create a culture of 20 minutes a day, family literacy, and civic pride for Lacey, in Lacey, and?
Whereas a community-wide reading program such as Lacey Loves to Read Month will support both students and community members in understanding the power of writing and literacy in their lives, and?
Whereas a partnership between North Thurston Public Schools, the city of Lacey, and Lacey Timberland Regional Library has made this program possible, and?
Whereas reading literature that explores diversity, global, and social issues can help increase tolerance and unity within a community, and whereas Lacey citizens can read and discuss a variety of works by award-winning author Kazu Kibushi, who will visit our community February 21st, 2019.
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the city of Lacey, on behalf of the Lacey City Council hereby proclaim February 2019 as Lacey Loves to Read Month in the city of Lacey, and encourage citizens of all ages to acknowledge and celebrate the importance of reading and discuss the works by author Kazu Kibushi. Signed, myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, on February 14th, 2019. And Jeanette, or someone can... Here's the proclamation. Thank you, thank you. Anyone want to say a few words? Do you want to say anything, or just want to... Please.
So, I'm in my official capacity in North Thurston Public Schools. I'm the director of ELA, of Social Studies, and our library programs, and I've been involved with Lacey Loves to Read in various positions in this year, the first year as a co-chair. And to see the hard work of all of our committee members, what it really takes to put on an event of this magnitude, has been an eye-opener, and I am just so pleased with everything that the committee is doing. And on behalf of North Thurston Public Schools and our literacy department, we just love this event, and our kids love this event tremendously, and they are so looking forward to this year's author.
Great. So, next up on our agenda is a public hearing regarding the interim regulations for small-cell wireless communication facilities. I'm gonna open up that public hearing now, and turn it over to Jessica.
Good evening, Mayor, council. This agenda item has two recommendations. The first one is to hold a public hearing on ordinance 1538, interim regulations for small-cell wireless communication facilities, and the second recommendation is to adopt an ordinance making findings of fact in support of ordinance 1538. An interim ordinance was adopted by city council January 10th, 2019, in preparation for the rollout of new FCC rules that took effect January 14th. And the rules establish shot clocks for state and local approvals for deployment of small-cell wireless facilities, it limited fees that could be collected, and provided guidance on streamlining state and local requirements on wireless infrastructure deployment. And the interim ordinance that we adopted regulates wireless communications facilities that address small cells, and I'll just summarize them by chapters. So in chapter 5.60, we added some definitions, we made the requirement of having a franchise agreement for providers requesting to place equipment in the right-of-way, we added terms and conditions regarding emergencies, access, and shut-off switches, and then also added that substantial changes in height to existing towers will be measured for approved permits prior to January 10th, 2019. And in chapter 16.68, we also added some definitions. We explained in more detail the process if you want to apply for a small cell, so you go through the master franchise agreement, site plan review, and right-of-way permits prior to construction or placement of any wireless communications facilities in the right-of-way. We also had some conditional use permit exemptions for minor modifications to large structures and small cells. We outlined the application requirements. We laid out in detail the aesthetic requirements for any new small cells that want to go on our buildings, wooden poles, non-wooden poles, and any new poles that the carry would be placing. And we also described some technical and safety requirements, a list of exempt installations, and also referenced again that substantial changes in height to existing towers will be measured from approved permits prior to January 10th. Now regarding substantial changes in height to existing towers, this came up during the date when we adopted the ordinance. We've been just gathering some preliminary information for you, and just on existing cell towers in Lacey, the city has permitted approximately 20 cellular towers since the mid-1990s. The most recent was in 2013. And since those original permits were approved, just a handful of requests for replacing antennas or other equipment have been processed, with only four in the last six years requesting any height increases. And the heights of existing structures range from 90 feet to 100 feet, 150 feet, excuse me, with the majority being about over 100 feet tall. And currently, under FCC rules, requested changes to the height of existing towers that are 10% or less of the current height are permitted without an approval process. And we're here tonight because in accordance with state law pertaining to interim regulations, the council must hold a public hearing on the adopted interim zoning ordinance within at least 60 days of the adoption. The purpose of the public hearing is to receive public comment and testimony with regard to the interim regulations. And the council must also adopt findings of fact justifying its actions of the interim ordinance immediately after the public hearing. And an interim ordinance adopted may be effective for not longer than six months, but may be effective for up to one year if a work plan is developed for related studies providing for a longer period. An interim ordinance may be renewed for more than six months, periods if the subsequent public hearing is held and findings of fact are made prior to renewal. And going forward, the planning commission and staff will continue to evaluate and update regulations as needed, and applications are processed. To date, no applications have been submitted. A public hearing on the proposed final ordinance is expected to be held by the planning commission in May of 2019, and then a recommendation for adoption of a final ordinance to you all by council in June 2019. So in summary, we have a recommendation for two items to hold a public hearing on interim ordinance, and then adopt the ordinance findings of fact.
So we're holding that public hearing right now? I don't think we received any, but is there any written testimony?
Nope.
And just to clarify, you said there's no applicants. My question was gonna be, has there been any applications since our meeting in January?
Nope.
Anything to add, council? Is there anyone from, wishing to address this council on this public hearing? Seeing none? Is there any comment? Then I'm gonna close this public hearing. Thank you. And our next item on our agenda is the ordinance of 1541, finding the facts where the small-cell interim ordinance. Jessica.
And that is in your packet as attachment two to this, and the recommendation is to adopt the ordinance making findings of fact.
Can I get a motion?
Move to adopt the ordinance making findings of fact in support of ordinance 1538.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember?
So question, and I wasn't at the last meeting that, this is a topic item, so forgive me if I missed something here in the readings, but can, can we speak to, it talks about, you know, health, wellness, and safety for the citizens of Lacey. Can you unpack that a little bit? Are we talking about, and then it talks about how it looks and that kind of a thing. But what about the safety of the higher waves versus the short, you know, more powerful electronics, that kind of thing?
The short answer is that the local jurisdictions can't regulate that. The FCC regulates that. And so if the carriers are complying with FCC requirements, that's kind of at that level, not at the local level. In general, health, safety, and welfare, I think we regulate aesthetics so that things are compatible, which you already talked about, on the safety side for our own employees, shut-off switches, so that if they're maintaining streetlights or wherever this equipment is, if we need to access it, or if it falls into roadway or something like that, we can shut those off. Those are kind of the main issues that we discussed at the staff level.
So if there's any concerns about safety regarding the radiation or anything like that, and that needs to be taken up with the FCC, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Deputy Mayor?
You can, though, make sure that it's not endangering traffic and pedestrians, and that's correct.
Absolutely.
Anything else?
So anything over 10%, you have to get a variance or special permit, right?
Yeah, so we've had an ordinance in place to regulate the really tall towers since 1998, and the process for that is conditional use permits. And I think for a case like that, if it's over 10%, they'd go through that existing process.
Just for information, in case somebody's watching, listening.
See anything else? Seeing none. It's been moved in seconded to adopt this ordinance 1541, the plans of facts related to small cell interim ordinance. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
So next up is the mayor's report, and I do have one report to give. I mentioned, I think it was last month, that we talked about different member assignments, committee member assignments, and if there was ever an issue, if anyone needed to change anything. And I was approached by Councilmember Cox and Councilmember Young about having them switch who's the primary and who's the alternate on the, can you remind me, is it the?
It's the Community Investment Project and?
DIP.
Health and Human Services Council.
Yes, so they asked me if they can switch between alternate and, and the primary, and I said, it sounds good if it was up to them, but this is, I'm reporting out on that, that's going to be my recommendation, Councilmember.
First, thank you very much for doing that, as the council agree, appreciate it a lot. I'm not in process of anything, I just wanted to hear about your strategy and why you wanted to do this.
This has been, I'm currently the alternate, and Rachel's the lead on this. Rachel has got a lot of time pressure right now with trying to launch a new business, and because this has been really complicated work with this group, I've been going to the meetings anyway. I think I've been to almost every single meeting. And so just for those times when I've had to be the lead, so I'd know what the heck was going on. So it just, I offered, you know, Rachel, you know, the opportunity to switch if she wanted to, as long as you all were comfortable with that, and she jumped at the chance, so.
Does this require a motion?
I don't know if it's, yeah, I was just looking at the council procedure. So council typically affirms a decision, no different than an appointment, so there should be at least acknowledgement, a motion, a second, and then a vote.
So I would move to accept their, the recommendation of the mayor to switch Carolyn and Rachel's positions as primary and?
Alternate.
Alternate for that committee.
Second. Thank you, thank you for the motion. Is there any further discussion? It's been moved in seconded. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for stepping up, Carolyn, I really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And that's my report. City Manager.
So Mayor and City Council, I have one report. It's a park rules update, and Jennifer Burridge, our Parks Director, will provide the information on that.
Good evening, Mayor Ryder, council members. Before you tonight is the Lacey Park Rules Update. The recommendation is final approval of these park rules. Some background is in 2019, or excuse me, 2018, the Park Board of Commissioners has been working on bringing park rules up to standards in regards to freedom of speech and recreational drone and model aircraft usage. At the May 9th, 2018 Park Board meeting, the Commissioners voted to change Park Rule Number Two regarding distribution of materials in the parks and to remove Park Rule Number 14, which related to public gatherings. So a little more detail on Park Rule Number Two. It states places or affixes to any object, any word, sign, circular, character, or device, and then this portion right here that I'm going to read is the portion that was deleted, designed to advertise, solicit, sell, or promote any business, profession, article, thing, exhibition, matter, or event, or distributes literature. So that's the portion that was taken out, and then without prior approval. So currently, it reads places or affixes to any object, any word, sign, circular, character, or device without prior approval. And then Rule Number 14, which stated, holds public or group rallies without prior approval that disrupts other regular and scheduled park activities, that one was removed completely for freedom of speech. Then at the September 5th, 2018 meeting, Park Board of Commissioners voted to change Rule Number 13 and add a new Park Rule Number 14, both relating to recreational drone and model aircraft use. So a little more detail on that one. 13 states launches or detonates any object such as rockets, fireworks, et cetera, without prior approval. And then they added, with the exception of recreational drones and model aircraft. And along with that, number 14, the new Number 14 states, recreational drone and model aircraft use shall comply with all federal aviation administration regulations and safety guidelines. And I'll highlight the main FAA guidelines, which people would be expected to follow, which are fly only for fun or recreation, fly at or below 400 feet, fly within visual line of sight, never fly near other aircraft, never fly over groups of people, public events, or stadiums full of people, never fly near or over emergency response efforts. So as you know, council reviewed and discussed these updates at the January 24th work session recently, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Can I get a motion?
Move to approve the, approve the park rules.
And I'll second it. It's been moved and seconded, discussion, Deputy Mayor?
So, well, I certainly will end up supporting this. My concern is that if they don't follow FFA rules, then it's sort of after the fact that you end up having to cite them or something, and, you know, by, I guess that's my concern. They, they can still not follow the rules, and then it's after the fact to do anything about that. And I don't know what you do about that, but I, I'm concerned about it.
Wouldn't that be true, though, of enforcement of any law?
Possibly, but if it's upfront, you know, saying no, then I think there's a more line drawn, frankly, but.
And on this one, we actually don't have a choice because the FAA would trump our rules when it comes to air.
Well, that's true, yeah. So anyway, that's just my concern. It's not that I, it's enough for me to vote against it, but.
Deputy Mayor, I'll just add that, as, as Jen pointed out, the FAA has preempted the field. But if there was, if there was reckless behavior by a drone pilot, I mean, we have other reckless endangerment, for example, I mean, law enforcement does have some tools to address egregious use or piloting of a drone. These would be more of the technical details.
Okay.
Probably in the same fashion of, you know, the First Amendment and freedom of speech, you know, that's, that's one of our, that's our most sacred right, right? But also the quiet enjoyment or enjoyment of public spaces as well. And there's probably a fine line in there with law enforcement and egregious.
Are there, are there, are there cities that have out banned drones used in parks?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. There you go.
Yeah, well, I do know the very first thing that started this whole issue was that one drone spying on somebody in their home and stuff in Seattle, and that's, ever since then, I thought, oh gee. But, but I think people are more aware of that now, and there's probably more ability to do something about it before that happens and stuff, so.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved in second to approve these park rules. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, I just have a couple announcements. One is, I want to publicly thank Interim Chief Chris Ward. This is actually going to be his last city council meeting tonight.
Oh, no. Good job.
Yeah, that's right.
Oh, yeah, we're not clapping.
It's over.
Short and sweet.
Actually, Chief Semko, he's a great guy, he's going to do a great job for us. Went out to lunch with him today, he's outstanding.
Excellent.
So when will he be?
He'll be starting Tuesday the 19th. He'll get sworn in, then I get sworn in, back to commander.
Okay, great.
Chris has been holding down that position since November 1st, so we appreciate his officious duty, so thank you for that.
I certainly do, too, and the new chief didn't turn tail and run back to California after all the snow.
He loves it up here in the Blowness City.
I would add that Marines are born to lead, so just.
Speaking of leadership, I do want to point out, Public Works, as you know, we've dealt with kind of an unprecedented snow event. It's amazing when we have snow on the ground, I think everyone sort of realizes maybe the unpreparedness. It's quick to point out, too, it does take us 18 hours to actually go through all the materials. I know there's been some questions about why don't we go to city streets, and that's been a policy that we've had for probably at least 15, if not 20, years. And again, this is probably an eight-year event, but I would like to have Director of Public Works Scott Egger maybe just kind of comment kind of where the present situation is, maybe comment of the crews that have been out really around the clock trying to make sure that arterials are actually passable.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council. So, you know, we've been working, worked, the crews worked around the clock from Friday, February 8th through Tuesday, February 12th. And, you know, people look at the snow removal, but it was all of operations, it was transportation, it was utilities, it was parks maintenance, and it was our fleet mechanics. So I think that they removed debris from over 50 trees during that period of time. The utility folks, there were a lot of power outages, so they were dealing with those and running generators to lift stations and wells. You know, obviously, the mechanics had to keep the equipment running since they were running around the clock, and the transportation, yeah, they, they had, well, basically four pieces of equipment going, working around the clock, three, you know, large plows, all with sanders on the back. I think we put down about 150 tons of sand while we were plowing, and then also an F-550 with a plow, a lighter-duty truck, and a, you know, not, that F-550 almost compares with the boss's F-250. And it has a 750-gallon deicer tank on it, so it's plowing and deicing.
Backup.
But, you know, we, we are fortunate, in this year's budget, we're approved for another 10-yard vehicle, which will also purchase about a 2,000-gallon slide-in tank that will be used as a deicer and another plow that goes on that. And the truck-plow combo runs north of $300,000, so that's a major investment, and obviously we, we would not buy that just for snow removal, we have a need for that, that vehicle year round. And, yeah, as, as City Manager said, it takes about 18 hours to fully plow our roads. Since we basically just have the three major plows, two work in tandem south of I-5, one works individually up, you know, north of I-5, that other one is kind of doing cleanup. So you can imagine if you're plowing a four-lane road like Willamette, that takes multiple passes for a single plow. And, you know, and then as, you know, you're doing part of it, cars are tracking, snow back and forth, so it's, to do a complete plow and cleanup, you're doing more than, you know, covering the ground just once. And, yeah, they've, crews have been, been working very hard. You know, we've had a lot of calls regarding, you know, when we were done, kind of cleaning up the arterials. Actually, the last couple of days, there's been a lot of work dealing with, you know, localized flooding, ponding, and that kind of thing. But we've had a lot of calls from people saying, you know, why don't you come plow residential areas now? But since people around here mostly are not familiar with snow, they don't realize that there's an unintended consequence, and if you plow that street, you're also plowing big berms into all the cars along the roadway and plowing in their driveways. And, and most people, you know, if, you know, we want to provide the best service we possibly can. So if people are able to get in and out of their residential street, although they might have to, you know, spin their wheels a couple of times, you know, versus going in and plowing and making it easier to get in and out, but then they have to dig themselves out, and they're probably throwing that snow out into the roadway anyway, you know, what's, you know, what provides better service? So, you know, we kind of honestly believe that, that as long as they're able to get in and out of the residential street and not have to deal with digging themselves their driveways out, you know, or, you know, or digging their cars that are parked along the street and throwing that snow back out in the street, that the better service is actually just letting it lie. And HOAs do have the ability to hire, you know, a contractor to come in and plow their street if they truly feel the need. So hopefully that provides you a little background, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer for you.
I just want to commend the crews, and they did a great job, I thought. I thought the streets were in great shape, much quicker than other areas around here, so did a great job. And, you know, as far as the neighborhoods, I'm sure everyone on council got some of those calls and emails as well, because I know I did. But, you know, even up in the Northeast and stuff, where this is a regular occurrence and they have more equipment because it happens every year, they still do the same thing. When they plow streets, they block in the driveways and stuff, it's, you know, and then you've got to shovel out, like you were saying, so, I mean, the snow has to go somewhere, right?
Yeah.
And I think you guys did a great job, so.
Well, thank you. You know, I had a lot of experience snowplowing before I came to Lacey, and I can tell you, you know, where we had, you know, major events, and it'd take three, you know, take 24 hours after it quits snowing to plow arterials another three days for residential. So you're tracking the weather, which way is it going? And you get in these trends where you're plowing out residential streets, and it's warming up and it's melting away, and you start getting complaints from individuals, you know, why did you plow my street? I could get in and out, and now I had to shovel myself out. And you make a decision, literally, I had this happen multiple times, where you make the decision, okay, end of shift, we're done. And a block away from where you received the call for people who complained that you plowed, just to block away the street that wasn't plowed, some people would call in and say, when are you going to come plow me out? So, you know, we're going to get complaints either way, but there again, our goal is to provide the best possible service, so that's what we're trying to do.
Councilmember?
A question and then a comment. It's a question, how, how do we do on the, on the pokeys in the, in the street?
Ah, I think they all survived this time.
Good, good.
Yeah, we, we made some changes after 2012.
Good, good.
I saw a couple out there, but for the most part, yeah.
What are those called? Caps?
Raised pavement markers.
Raised pavement markers.
RPMs.
So then I was, I was actually out before council tonight, talking to some of the office here in Lacey, and we, you know, it would take some education and hard to know if it would work or not, but, you know, in a neighborhood, you usually get folks that'll help with their yard, and in a good neighborhood, they'll help out with those that can't, right? If they would just go a little further halfway into their road and dig that out collectively, then their neighborhood would be clear, just a thought, but.
Good idea.
I mean, it would, it would save, you know, days of that trouble of, for, for a neighborhood, and then I don't know if there's a consideration for a communication in one of our Delios next year for next, you know, pretty, so hey, if it snows, just go another 10 feet out into your yard, I don't know.
That, that does bring up a good question, and I don't know the answer. Can a private citizen plow a residential street?
So our agreement asks, or specifically requires, for the contractor that's hired to be licensed.
Can a private citizen plow a residential street?
So, our agreement asks, or specifically requires, for the contractor that's hired to be licensed, bonded, and insured. You know, because, you know, if they damage something while they're plowing or damage, you know, a neighbor's car, then they're licensed, bonded, and insured. So, you know, we, we couldn't prevent that, but that's not within our agreement.
So, you know, even a good, you know, citizen trying to do the right thing, you know, is maybe put in a bad situation. The other question I have, and it's a question that was brought up, who's responsible for clearing the sidewalk?
The property owners are responsible.
So, if, if the street, if we've been plowing a street and we've pushed all that snow up into the sidewalk, then we do, then we make the, the property owner then have to clear the sidewalk?
That's right.
Okay.
That's actually how it is in most places I've seen.
Yeah.
Even in the Northeast where there's more regular currents, even if the city owns the sidewalk, you're responsible for the clearing.
I just don't think very many people understand that, that they're responsible for clearing the sidewalk in front of their house.
I think if you took a poll of Lacey residents, I bet you less than 30% actually own a snow shovel. So, the reality is, you know, even those sidewalks that are, you know, separated with landscape strips that we never plow into, the majority don't get shoveled.
Yeah. Well, I, I think we're going off topic here, but I, it's, it's good because, you know, we've, we've gone through a, a, a snow event that doesn't happen very often. So, it brings up a lot of questions that you just don't have, you know, necessary answers for. The other big question is, is on these private properties on, on like, these office complexes or the apartment complexes, it's up to the, the property owner to clear that, that, you know, their, their parking lot. But what happens if they don't clear the parking lot, which is a lot of, I got a lot of phone calls saying, hey, I'm in this parking, I live in this apartment, and I can't get out my, my, I can't get out my car, and the, the owner of the apartment hasn't hired anyone to clear the parking lot. Lacey, you need to come and do something about this. And I'm, and I'm like, uh, it's.
And you're stuck in your house.
Yeah. So, what do you do, what are we supposed to do in that circumstance?
Well, I'd have to defer to the city attorney, but I don't believe we have a legal mechanism to take any action there.
There's nothing we can do, right?
Speaking from a commercial property owner myself, it's a special, you know, balance between, you know, you could, you could pay for a plowing service that costs you $5,000 a year and then not use it for three or four years because it never snows significantly enough to use it. And then that one year you don't do it, then you get three feet of snow, you know, it's, and, you know, this is a special balance between, because ultimately, the, the cost goes to the tenants or the people leasing, which is the same thing if you're in an apartment. You know, you're really looking out, trying to make it as affordable for everybody who's, who's doing business there or living there. But at the same time, you want to, like the city, you want to provide the best possible service available. And striking that balance is really, you know, it's a tough manager, management.
City manager?
I, I just wanted, and I refer to you, but I, I just want to make sure our audience on the air and so forth understand that HOAs can take up plowing their own area. Would you address that, just so people know?
Yeah, I believe we just, I think the last snow event, we actually came with this policy, and we just wanted to make sure there was some self-help option, because it's not, it doesn't feel good to say sorry. You know, you just got to basically weather through it. So, HOAs can, we do have a written policy. We've gone, we've used our HOA program to communicate what that means. It is getting a licensed and contracted contractor. It's good to make sure they communicate with the neighbors, to make sure that everyone's on board, that this is what they're doing, because in case they do get plowed in or stuck in their driveway. So, there's a process for it. Public Works reviews it, so we understand who's out there. And if there's any complaints, it's really on that HOA to make sure that they're dealing with that, that issue. But again, it's an option. Doesn't happen very often, but it's an option available. I do want to just make one point, at least since I've been, we've never actually had abbreviated hours. We did have abbreviated hours on Monday and Tuesday, but I guess that goes to really the, a thank you to the city employees who are coming to City Hall to make sure that we're open for the public. So, a lot of times, it's a snow event, everything closes down, but your city government is still out there providing services. So, it's a thank you to all city employees.
I will add one last thing, Mr. Mayor, is my plow contract is $400 minimum. It's a, that's two hour minimum, and then $150 every hour after that. So, you know, like, when it comes to that strike, and that's, and the cities, you know, Scott mentioned, our equipment is 300,000 minimum. So, you know, you can buy, buy a quarter to half a million-dollar piece of machinery, do it yourself, or you can hire it at 400 bucks minimum, at 150 an hour. I mean, it, it all adds up really quick for an event that usually in our area lasts, you know, maybe a couple of days.
Yeah, I know it's a, it's a tough line for a lot of people, and we just haven't seen snow like this. And it was, it seemed like it was just a losing battle, too. It's like you shovel it, and then an hour later, it was just like, it was back again, and it's like, you had to shovel it again, so.
And like Scott was saying, it takes 18 hours to do the city. And in 18 hours, it's already snowed three or four more inches, you know, so.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. We're going to go on to our next agenda item, which is standing in general committees. First up is the Community Relations Committee.
Community Relations met on January 7th. Myself and Carolyn Cox were present. The first agenda item was the 4th of July, or the 3rd of July fireworks update. It's pretty brief, so I'll just read it. The city of Lacey took on the fireworks show from Capital Development back in 2012. At that time, a partnership was formed with the city, with the Lacey Chamber, South Sound Chamber. Now, it's the Lacey South Sound Chamber, it used to be just Lacey Chamber. Lacey Chamber was tasked with soliciting sponsorships for the fireworks show and facilitate, facilitate payments for the fireworks. In 2018, our rec supervisor, too, took on the entire sponsorship fundraising task, and will use the Park Foundation as a pass-through. This ensures that the city of Lacey is not paying for the fireworks portion of the event. The Chamber will continue to provide assistance for the sponsorship acquisition through their membership. And the second agenda item was finalized, specialized recreation follow-up. I love this program here. It's, I'll read it again. It's Thurston County Recreation Services, provides recreation programs for people of all abilities. The city of Lacey now has a three-year contract with the Thurston County Recreation Services, and has provided over 8,000 for parks recreation programs for acquisition specialized recreation registrations. So, people with disabilities can, can use various, and Jen might want to jump in here and, and say something about it, but it's, you know, people with disabilities don't have a lot of choices to be active in the community. And for eight grand, I think this is just money well-spent and, you know, enhances their quality of life and gets them involved in the community. And, you know, I just get excited about it. I get goosebumps and, and it's just a great program that services the underserved, in my opinion, so.
Thank you. Next up is the Utilities Committee, and who chaired, who chaired that committee back on January 7th?
I did.
Okay, Councilmember.
So, I'd like to talk about the snow we had, this, no, I'm just kidding. So, one second. So, we discussed Utilities Committee, January 7th, a while ago, at noon. And we discussed, or were presented, water treatment, disinfection, filtration, and corrosion. And whoever took the notes to that meeting must have a chemistry degree, because there's some, it's pretty detailed notes about that, and I appreciate that. And I, I'm not going to read it. There are some very good bullet points here, though, I'll mention. There's, how do I say this? I'm going to summarize the way I said I would from the meeting. For me, it, it's going to be water treatment, disinfection, filtration, and corrosion for dummies. When I say, when I, in my mind, when I think I'm JP Citizen, I think of, you know, water clean. I kind of think of maybe like, like the pool or something. You put a little powder in and, you know, you test it, and it works out well. But that is absolutely not the way City Lacey manages their water. It's actually a very sophisticated, redundant system that considers so much. It considers efficiency, cost, and safety. And those are critical when you're, when Lacey of our size, several years ago, had to go to chlorination. We mix our own chemicals. We make sure that the equipment is par and beyond. We make sure, you know, corrosion has, cannot win. Testing, redundant power sources, I'm sure they, those kicked in over the snowstorm. Security, training, certification. I mean, at the end of the day here, we're dealing with our drinking water. It's a big, big deal. And I was extremely impressed with the presentation. Certainly, for the good of the state of Washington and the health authorities have good scientific regulations. Lacey seeks to blow those away as far as concern and practice and strategy to make our water available, clean, and efficient, and economical to, to the many dollars that it takes to, to operate and serve the citizens over a wide area that's spread out also where the sources of water are in various places. You can't just say, I want water here, and there's water here. You know, you have to go where the water is. And then, and this is just after last few years, we had to find more water and these kinds of things. So, I hope that's a good summary of the strength of our water treatment program here at the city of Lacey, without having to go too much into polymers, sodium, hypochlorite injections, and et cetera. But we have an excellent water program here. And I, I add my kudos and thanks to Public Works and to the team of excellent people here that are watching over our water. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're on to Boards, Commissions, and Community Reports. I'm up first. It's been kind of a strange month so far. The Mayor's Forum, which we usually meet no matter what, we didn't have, not only, there was really, we don't have a quorum, but in this circumstance, we only had like two or three, two mayors that could make the meeting. And so, we knew it was going, there's only, a couple of us couldn't make it from the get-go. There we had other things going on, and they were going to still have the meeting. But then the day before, we realized there was, no one could basically show up. And so, we ended up canceling the Mayor's Forum, which is something that rarely happens. And so, we'll be meeting again next, well, this next month, next month. And then, same thing happened, Transportation Policy Board was supposed to have met on Wednesday at 7:00 a.m. Of course, that didn't happen because of the weather, so that's been canceled. But we have rescheduled, we're trying to reschedule that meeting to the 22nd of February, next Friday, I think, because there's just so much on our agenda that we can't really afford just to wait till next month to, to have another meeting. So, there's some, so a poll went out, and then we're, we're checking with everyone, because we rescheduled it for the 22nd, but if we can't have a quorum, then it's, that's not going to, you know, we're not going to get anywhere. So, we're still waiting to hear back on a couple of people, and then hopefully, we'll go ahead with that meeting. But as, as in my role as the Chair of the Transportation Policy Board for the past, geez, five, six years, one of my roles is to go to the state legislature and, and talk to all of our legislators about our priorities when it comes to transportation for the Thurston Regional Plan Council. And I have already attended five meetings, I think, so far. And we had one, I had one earlier today with Representative Griffey. And so, we try to talk to all, everyone in, in the, that touches Thurston County. So, all the legislative districts that touch Thurston County. And sometimes, if it's a, a big issue, we'll go and talk to people on the transportation, who's in transportation as well, the, the Chair or whoever else. So, we've been, we've been very busy talking about our priorities here for Thurston County. Of course, our biggest priority for Thurston County is the I-5, work that's, we've, that the city of Lacey has championed for the last three years. And this past, last year, we received some money that we were able to help leverage within the Nisqually Tribe to do some work. This year, we're asking for four and a half million dollars to do the Nipasipa work that will be necessary to look at everything from the Nisqually Bridge all the way through Exit 93. So, everyone who we've talked to have been very sympathetic. They obviously live in this region and understand the challenges we're going to face with replacing the bridges and all the work that needs to go into expanding the freeway system. But in the meantime, of course, we're working on alternative transportation and interstate transit and everything we can do to try to help alleviate the congestion on I-5. So, that's my report. Deputy Mayor?
I just want to follow up very briefly about I-5. And because I, it'll probably come out later, but I was appointed as the Secretary for TRPC, which means I go to the pre-agenda stuff. And I, I don't know if you went to it or not, but the League of Women Voters had a big presentation on water issues, one of which was presented by David Trout, not David Trout, is that his?
Yeah.
Yeah, David Trout, about the I-5 Nisqually Bridge stuff. It was excellently done. And so, that probably, not next month, but sometime in the next two or three months, that's going to be on our TRPC agenda. So, bringing others up to date about the tribal perspective of that. So, I just want to follow up with that. So, okay, so the JASCOM, Joint Animal Services Commission, met January 23rd. And we had to redo our elections because with a new Commissioner for Thurston County, they sat down and rejuggled their representative assignments. And since Commissioner Hutchins was the Chair at that time, and he's no longer the Representative for JASCOM, we redid, we had re-elected our officers. So, our Chair is now Olympia Council member Lisa Partially, and then I was elected Vice Chair. And then we had an update on the recruitment of JASCOM's Executive Director. And we had received, surprisingly to me, 23 applicants at the time of our meeting. And at this time, I know it's been narrowed down to 10, and I assume it'll be narrowed down to something like four, five, six by March 7th, when we meet with, literally meet with the candidates to be able to talk with them. And it's following the same processes we've done for, like, the police chief, that type of system. So, and then also, we passed the Rules and Procedures Policy, which includes an amendment, yay, to change the meeting date to the 4th Wednesday. And I am so relieved, because I had JASCOM at 5:30 before this council meeting, and it was always this hurry up and slide in here thing. So, 4th Wednesday is good for me. So, that's my report on JASCOM. And then LOT met yesterday, the 13th, and we had our work session, a briefing on the draft 2019 work plan. And we're also, we're LOT and its partners on the Sea Level Rise Plan, I'm sorry, sorry. So, the work plan, and then also LOT, a, a presentation about LOT and its partners on the Sea Level Rise Plan, which has also gone out for SEPA review, and we'll be having a hearing on the document February 26th. And then, I know I'm getting scratchy, aren't I? Lot's decis, the other one also was talked about during the work session. Lot's decision to place a moratorium on commercially hauled waste to reduce high nutrient loads over short periods of time. Because when it's all somewhat, during a short time period, the plant just can't handle the nutrient load. And then, one of the other things is, we had a discussion over SB 2657, which would require, that bill would require that all MPDES permits be issued to remove opioids from the waste stream. And, you know, we've done this major study already, and it's not finished yet, but we've done the nutrient analysis. And opioids was not part of that. But so we have no idea of how prevalent or if it's a problem or not in the waste stream. But by making our MPDES permit dependent on that, it, what we don't know if it needs it or not is, is significant. And it would also be significantly costly. So we're preparing a letter to the committee that's of this bill and letting them know about our concerns. It's not that we, if we get funding to study it, but if it's already in, you know, in a legislation, then it could be bad. So our business meeting, we had a presentation by the mayor of Olympia, Cheryl Selby, and Carrie Retlin, the home fund manager on Olympia's homeless response plan approach. And you're wondering why Lot, but we contributed 150,000 for the hygiene trailer, which probably will cover two other hygiene trailers as well. They're about 60,000 each. We had election of officers, and I was again elected president. Mayor Pete Komet of Tumwater was again elected vice chair, president. And then, as usual, the secretary was Megan McAuliffe, which is Lot's board support administrative specialist. And the treasurer was Justin Long, Lot's finance director. And you wonder why staff is part of the secretary treasurer thing. But it's pretty much always been that way because there's a major liability aspect to handling legal and financial documents with Lot. And the other two things is, we passed the ultraviolet disinfection upgrades construction contract to Stellar J Corporation of Woodland. And for the amount of, and I know this is huge, but this is a majorly complex upgrade, well, actually, replacement of the ultraviolet thing, which is our, sort of our tertiary treatment. It's $4,451,946. And so that will, it's been designed now, starting construction. And then we also passed the ultraviolet disinfection upgrades construction support contract to parametrics of Pualab. And it's not to exceed 700-plus thousand. A discussion ensued about the high cost, but apparently, this project requires major technical oversight, including making sure all permits are obtained and all technicals, construction is followed. And while staff will work closely with them, it requires really technical ability to make sure this complex project is falling, following exactly the, to the letter. And parametrics previously provide the engineering design services, so they understand the complexity of it. So that's my report on Lot. The Olympia Region Clean Air Agency also met yesterday, but in the morning, and the chair appointed finance committee members. I was again appointed chair. The other two members were Commissioner Wes Cormier from Grace Harbor County and Commissioner Randy Netherland from Mason County. We postponed the presentation from Dr. Hadley about understanding climate and climate change. I saw one of hers previously quite a while ago, but it's been updated and stuff. And we're going to have it again when there's more members present. So many had to call in because they couldn't get down because of the snow. And then we had a report by the state auditor's office. We had a clean audit. And we passed the policies and procedures manual, which was updated. And then every year, we have to pass Rule 1.11, a rule change, which is basically to change the reference date from the previous year to the present year. It's, we have to have a hearing and go through that, even though it's nothing but a date change. But we did that. And then January's air quality summary of particulate matter 2.5 microns for the month of January showed Thurston County having 22 good days, seven moderately bad days, and two days that were unhealthy for sensitive groups. However, the maximum reading for those two days were just barely over the line. So it's not that bad. Colder months tend to be higher because people use their wood stoves. And I hate to see what's going to happen for February after we get through to the last three or four days. So Dr. Hadley also showed a data comparison between a purple air sensor versus the nethalometer at Mountain View Elementary for six months. And because staff has so many problems maintaining the nethalometers to compare our permanent meter with, to make sure it's in the right location, because they kept going down and breaking down, they decided to maybe try the purple sensor, air sensor, even though it doesn't calculate right on the same line. It, it follows the line, but it overcompensates. So you have to make a, a formula correction to make sure that it checks out. But once you do that, it's correct. The advantage of those little monitors, if you know what you're doing, is that they're extremely cheaper, like 100,000, I mean, 1000, $1,000 difference. And they're, you can, they're wireless, so you don't have to go on site, and it'll download all the information. And it's literally, literally is slightly bigger than this. I mean, it is just tiny, so, and light. So that's a pretty neat thing. And I guess that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Young couldn't make it today. Today being Valentine's Day, it's actually her busiest day of the year for her business. And so she called me early on and said she was absolutely swamped, and she's going to try to make it, but if she couldn't get here on time, let us know why. And that, you know, this is the busiest day of the year for her. And so I totally understood. So she's excused for this evening. So next up is Councilmember Greenstein.
So all of my committees actually meet next week, so I have no committee reports. But I did want to give a quick update. Both the House and Senate have passed out of committee the bill that was introduced in order to finance the upgrade to the radio system for emergency services here in Thurston County. And actually, for the, it would be a bill that would affect the entire state and all of the counties. But it has passed out of committee, and things look really good. We have great bipartisan support on it. So, looks, looks really good.
Does funding come with it?
So it doesn't actually come with funding. It comes with the ability to ask the taxpayers for additional funding. And as you know, it's not usually something I'm a big supporter of, but in this case, it's, it's a serious situation. We have a radio system that our police and fire use that is just not working in parts of the county. We have buildings even within Lacey where police and fire can't communicate because the radios don't work, so.
It's lifting the cap, then.
Correct. It would be lifting the cap from a 1%, I'm sorry, 0.1, to point, to give the ability to go to a point two, but it would be by vote of the people. So, but it looks really good. I think it, it looks like it's got a good chance of getting to the legislature this time.
Great. Thank you for the report. Councilmember Hearn?
So the VCB took a champ, took a field trip Monday, two Mondays ago, down to the Lewis County Sports, indoor sports facility. I wasn't able to make it, but it'll be interesting to hear their report on that from the sports commission perspective, and we'll be sharing that. Thurston County against, Thurston County Coalition Against Trafficking. So over the years here now, it's, it's evolved that there's two major events of the year that we work around. And in between those events is a lot of training and education and, and other things. So the one event that I meant, of the two, is the, what was this year called, Community Conversations. And that was a couple of weeks ago at, in Tumwater, at the ESD 113 building. And it was very well attended with a lot of key contacts. That included business, hospital, education, police. Thank you, Lacey, for attending. And also representatives from Joint Base Lewis McCord. And so there was so much data collected from, from that meeting that it's actually still being crunched. We had our monthly TCAT meeting tonight, and we had some summaries of it. But they're doing more analysis of that for action based on the community or that conversational meeting. And one of the thing, the main points that I took out of it was the willingness of JBLM to get their heads around this. They're involved, they have military police, and they have investigators, and they work with the FBI on base and on bases around the world. But it'll, it's great that they're willing to have an advisory person connect in, in this conversation so that we can learn from them and they can learn from us and, and just do some really good work. So the other annual event that's coming up again quickly is the Race Against Trafficking 5K. And the monies that were raised for this last year were spent to educate school systems, law enforcement, things like this, free of charge. So the educators, the educators are always having to be trained on many things, and they get, they get credits for this. And oftentimes, the, the schools have to pay for this training. So we raise money and provide this training that qualifies towards their credits, and we provide it for them gratis from the fundraising that we do at the 5K race. So that's worked very well last year, and we're going to have another great race this year. It's at Tumwater, it's at Mountain View Church property and around in Tumwater. Also, which is near Tumwater City Hall on Israel Road, is the venue. It's a great venue. The Tumwater Police are hired and offer policing, the road's shut down. It's, it's a, it's a big event. There's awards, recognitions, I, we would say, for all kinds of things, like biggest team, you know, lots of things. And we were actually thinking maybe JBLM could go for that and have a whole bunch of troops down, running the race in, in their, in their training gear. But there's registration, early bird registration as well. We're having some vendors this year. I have a flyer for everybody here on council. And we'll be pushing this out. There's tremendous opportunity for a commercial to get involved and sponsor the event. Absolutely recognition for that at the event. And, you know, it all goes towards saving lives and, and helping people prevent trafficking. So a lot of, a lot of great things going with TCAT. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Councilmember Stedman?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Both my committees, the Lacey South Sound Chamber and the Solid Waste Advisory Commission, met on the 6th of February. I'll, I'll cover the world of solid waste, which has its challenges, to say the least, first. We, we worked on our work plan and meeting time and, and days because it conflicts with the, a lot of, not just my committee with the Lacey South Sound Chamber, but many of the representatives on that committee as well. So we moved that to earlier in the day, and it's still covered to the point where I couldn't make it to the Lacey South Sound Business Awards, but I'll cover that in, in my report still. SWAC, you know, the, the world of solid waste and recycling with the China, China sword, and them, the not taking recyclables anymore. And with the 0.05 contamination rate, where you could have a whole bend of mixed paper and have a, a little tiny piece of glass in it, and it contaminates the whole thing. And in result, it going to landfill when, when the good people are, you know, go through the trouble of recycling and stuff, thinking it's, they're doing the right thing, and it's, and they're contributing, contributing to a better world, when in fact, upwards of 50 or 60% in some cases go to the landfill, which is unacceptable. It's very concerning to us on that committee. We're working diligently to find better ways. Number one, education. We believe that the type ones and threes, everybody, the most easy, in layman terms, the most easiest things to recycle, to, you know, clean them and, and stuff before you put them in the recycling bin. That way, it ensures that it does get recycled. But I'll say from a, you know, the business, private business sector, this will only stem future business in America and abroad because there's obvious supply and demand. If China's not taking it and they take 90% of the world's recycling, it will find, and it has value at that point. And even though it has very little today, it will have value and it will just create, it'll be a business incubator, if you, in my opinion. Having said that, we're, we're, we got a briefing from local recycling centers, distribution centers, and we're getting tours set up with them. And like I said, we're going to really attack the educational piece so people know that when they do recycle it, that, they ensure that it does get recycled and not sent to landfill. So going to the meeting at, at the Lacey South Sound Chamber, which I had to miss because that meeting went so long. I don't have a whole list of the award, you know, the winners or the nominations. But the Lacey South Sound Chamber, which I'm a chamber board member, every year recognizes leaders who excel in areas of workplace excellence, thinking chamber first, community services, military community support, nonprofit of the year, entrepreneur of the year, business of the year, et cetera, et cetera. And without listing every single one, I think it's unfair to list just a few. But I do have to give a shout out to Park Committee Member, Troy Kirby, was up for entrepreneur of the year with the Lacey Pocket Gophers. I heard Nutmeg and Digger were pretty excited about that. I won't give away if he won or lost or, or any of the, anything else, because like I said, I want to be fair. If I, if I, I, I felt that he's, has a direct connect with the city, being a, you know, a volunteer like many of us, that, that was fair enough. But you can look on the website for all the sponsors, especially of the event, and the, and sponsors of everything with Lacey South Sound Chamber, because that's number one. The chamber wouldn't be successful without the sponsorships or its memberships. The members are the chamber, and, you know, my platform is commerce, and I love it. And it directly affects what the city can provide to citizens and their service level and what they cannot. And many of those business owners also are the, you know, they're, they're all the members of the service clubs that do the stuff that government can't or shouldn't be doing, and that's very important. So every, everybody does, does what they can to make the community a better place. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Cox?
Righty. Community Action Council met on January 23rd, and good news for Community Action Council met on January twenty-third, and good news for Community Action Council. They went through layer by layer of the agency audit, and there were no significant findings. The auditor noted that the agency spends twelve and a half percent of its budget for administrative costs, and he says best practices state that an organization, organization that spends twenty percent or less on administration is an inefficient organization. So, that was very good to hear. The Monarch Children's Justice Center fundraising breakfast is coming up on April twenty-third. This year's speaker will be K.L. Randis, who is the author of the very popular book Spilled Milk. It'll be at St. Martin's. We heard a report on how the federal government shutdown was affecting the agencies that the Community Action Council works with. The gist of it was that they were likely to get by with most of them, but it was the clients more than anybody else that were going to be hurt when vouchers and funds ran out. And this runs the gamut from the Women, Infants, and Children's Program, to crime victims, to food, that sort of thing. So, they were going to try to use reserve funds to shore up where they could. Another interesting piece there is that United Way and the CAC have, are working on an agreement where CAC would disperse emergency funds that United Way might raise in a big disaster. And we just saw it operate on a little bit smaller scale here, where they raised some money to try to help federal workers who were hurting after being out of work for weeks from the federal shutdown. And so, that partnership got its first trial run there. Intercity Transit met on February sixth, and highlights of that meeting included a presentation on the 2019 service changes that will start in March, and long-range plan for that. Starting off slowly, because we have to, it's like a stone gathering moss, you have to, with the sales tax money, it has, we have to accumulate enough to make big changes. I think I've reported before that we've ordered a bunch of buses that will help us expand service, but it takes anywhere from eighteen to twenty-four months, once you place in order to actually get the buses delivered, because they don't build them on spec. So, the, we're likely to be, your, the first changes you'll see are operating longer hours. The buses will run earlier and later. And as we can, we will speed up service on routes in terms of, if you are on a route that has thirty-minute service, you'll get it every fifteen minutes, and they're going to do that as they can. We also reviewed a lengthy list of 2019 projects, and I will magnanimously not share that list with you tonight. I'm sure you can find it on the website in the minutes. We did do officer elections, and Tumwater City Councilmember Deb Sullivan will repeat as chair, and Ryan Warner will continue as vice chair. Thurston Regional Planning Council met on February first, and the biggest part of that meeting was an overview report on progress this area has made toward meeting sustainable Thurston goals. It was kind of a mixed bag. We got to do this fun little exercise, whether, where we had to guess whether we were doing really well with the sunshine, or not so well with a little bit of a cloud, or a rain cloud. And we're actually doing middling. I think there were some bright spots and some disappointing spots, but we're going to dive down into the some, like, three hundred actions identified in the plan, we'll get in future meetings dealing with that. We also heard a presentation on the, what's called the Main Street Rochester Project. This is on Highway twelve, where they're building a roundabout to try to help keep traffic moving, but not completely just wipe out these businesses along, because it's their main street, is Highway twelve. And this roundabout, I think, will help traffic that needs to be going straight through town, keep moving, and the traffic that wants to patronize the businesses will have a way to get to them. We also elected officers for that group, and Olympia City Councilmember Nathaniel Jones and Yale Mayor J.W. Foster will remain on as chair and vice chair, respectively. And Cynthia stole my thunder, but our very own deputy mayor, Cynthia Pratt, was elected as secretary, so congratulations to her. I don't know how many hats she wears, but it's quite a few. And the last piece of my report is on the Urban Cities Ad-hoc Committee on Homelessness and Affordable Housing. We met on February seventh, and the primary discussion centered on how to gear up quickly to develop criteria for requests for proposals for housing grants. There's, Thurston County has close to seven million dollars in these funds. They come through the federal housing and urban development department, they come through the state, they come through recording fees, lots of different streams of money for that. These announcements, it's, it's kind of a crunch, because these proposals have to go out, I think, by the twenty-fifth of February, so there's not a whole lot of time to develop the priorities, which become the criteria for which applications for grants are scored. So, we're rushing to try to get up to speed on that. The reason for that is county commissioners recently voted, like, in January, to ask this group to do this, that, that they had taken that away from this group at the end of 2017. So, trying to gear back up and do that on top of the work of awarding basic needs funding, to which our council contributes a half of a percent of our sales tax revenue, has been a little bit of a challenge. Unfortunately, our day-long retreat to deal with this got snowed out on the eleventh, and so, we're going to try to do a half-day retreat this Friday, as in tomorrow, to deal with the rest of it, so. And that is my report.
Well, thank you very much. We've actually reached the end of our agenda, but actually, we're going into an executive session before we adjourn to talk about real estate acquisition and potential litigation. We'll be in there for fifteen minutes, so I'm just going to adjourn for about five minutes, so we can get set up, and then we'll be in there for fifteen minutes, and then I'll come back and actually adjourn the meeting. No decisions are going to be made in the executive session, so I'm going to adjourn for five minutes while we get ready for our executive session.
You should decide what we're going for.
I did.
Okay, sorry.
That's right, city manager. I'm on top of it. I'm adjourned for like, five minutes.